Tuesday, February 18th, 4:00 PM, and a couple of seconds, minutes. Local.
You can't spend a ball.
Does it?
Councilmember Scott.
President.
Councilmember Bridget.
President.
Mayor Proten Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James.
President. Please join me for the board to leave this. Ready, begin.
Let me just clarify that these states are there and to be promoted, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the councils discuss the ad hoc committee changes to the 2030 general plan. So recommendation or receive a presentation. So we got maybe. I got a quick question, what year was this ad hoc committee recommended put together?
Twenty twenty, I think. I'm not sure. It's part of the presentation.
A long time ago. Okay. Lots changed. Who's up?
Good morning or good afternoon, this is Lori Timora, I'm a planning consultant that has been helping the city and working with Christine on this material. I'd like to go through slide presentation and follow along, we can always ask questions as we go.
Christine.
Sorry.
Say it from the computer tab.
Oh. So the purpose of this meeting today is to go over the project overview, the origination of the ad hoc comments, review of the comments, determine consensus of the ad hoc recommendations, and then the next steps and questions. Can you hit the next slide? Just an overview of the general plan, primarily it's a comprehensive roadmap for guiding the future of development, addresses the city's physical developments such as general locations, progress makes, timing, extent of land uses, and infrastructure needs to support that development. It can be amended up to four times per year. Currently, four amendments are being processed, we're not sure if we'll get those to the city council this year, but we are in the midst of updating general plans and some properties. Updates of the general plan require extensive community engagement since the plan reflects communities' vision and expectations for the future. Just to brief you on what general plan elements we currently have. What is required by state law are the elements on your left, the land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, safety and noise. You may remember that we recently had the housing element update and was certified in January by HCD. We are currently working on the safety element and we're also working on an update to the circulation element. The all of the other elements were approved between 2010 and 2013. So we're 10 years into some of these other elements. We also had what was added to state law recently was the environmental justice element, and that was adopted by the city council in 2024, or 2024, yeah. We also have some optional elements, parks and rec, public services, urban design, and economic development. And that was an added element that the city council decided and certified in 2015. Each one of these elements are required to go through a environmental impact report. The 2020 or the 2030 general plan was originally reviewed by the environmental impact report in 2010. And we've been using that master EIR for a number of different element updates and projects related to the general plan. The EIR must address fiscal conditions that have changed over time, but it should also be noted that even state law has changed over time, including requirements to address wildfire or hazard, energy use, greenhouse gas emissions, and several other impact areas that were not originally addressed in the 2010 EIR. So we wanted to go over before we get into the ad hoc discussion is to talk a little bit about implement or implications of what would happen as we move forward in adopting any changes to the current elements. Ad hoc committee general plan amendments, this is the table that was provided as summary of the comments that we received back in 2020 through 2021. The consultants and the staff would be looking at how to implement those changes through the different land use and economic development and the other elements. The those changes would have to go through additional environmental review. And the estimate for those changes would be somewhere between $100,000 and $150,000 of environmental review and additional public input and comments, and then going through the planning commission and also to the city council. The next step would be something that we think you should be aware of, if you can go to the next one. Thank you. The timeline for doing the ad hoc changes would be about 14 to 16 months. It would involve having a hearing to initiate the changes, the RFP for the environmental review, public sessions and community meetings, the preparation of the updated elements and the EIR. And then we do have an EIR public review process, planning commission, and then back to the city council. This is a relatively tight timeframe, but this would be the steps to implement the changes that we're talking about. We have something that we do want to talk with have as part of the discussion of this with the city council tonight is the general plan does need to be updated again in total. As you recall, the element right down the general plans we drew to as the 2030 plan. Well, we're 15 years into that plan since it was adopted, and we're looking at bringing forward a work program to do the 2050 plan. And that usually takes three to five years to get a full update to the general plan. And we're looking at the general plan starting probably in '26 or '27 in order to adhere to 2030, and that would be another 20-year plan. So go ahead to the next one. This is a schedule of what it would take timeline for a 2050 general plan. If we started in 2027 and we complete in 2030, we're looking at about a three to four year period of time to do many of those exact same steps that we just talked about. But because we're incorporating all of the elements of the general plan to review and bring it up to a new 20-year plan, this is the work effort that it would take to get that done. Does anybody have any questions about those items? We'll talk a little bit about the ad hoc committee and how it started. This is the background that I believe was asked of the mayor. The original comments were provided by edits to the general plans. And then in the in about July of 2020, those edits were culminated into the tables that were provided to you tonight. And we've been working on, those were the changes that were suggested. And we had two city council meetings that these comments were looked at in '20 and '21, but they were done, ultimately pursued amendments due to lack of funding. The planning commission received these comments and reviewed them in February of 2023. There was a meeting scheduled for the city council back in May of last year, but it was continued for realizing that the election was coming and other elements were considered at that time. So this is our first opportunity to bring these changes and suggestions back to your council and talk about any of the changes that I'd like to see. A summary of the changes that were discussed in the table, a lot of direction to change the shall statements to should. Make it a little bit more flexible. The economic development section would be adjusted to reflect the current economic development efforts, including expansion of wineries and cannabis, removal of the references to adequate cultural protection and promotion, and provide more flexibility in the goals, policies, and measures to provide a more pro-growth approach to new development. And these are all summarized in the tables that are before you. So what we would like to do right now is we can go through the tables or and talk about each one of those items, or we could have a discussion just about the strategy of either focusing on the ad hoc comments as a task in the near future versus focusing on the long-range plan of the update to your 2050 general plan update.
I just had a, I wanted to add, thank you Lori, the my question before we dig in, because I know you guys can't wait to dig in, is given the fiscal implications, I want to make sure that we are strategic in amending the general plan. So you kind of saw those ballpark on figures, this currently is unfunded. So I don't have a line item to pay for doing this right now. So I will have to bring an item back. So we can either during the budget process decide how much you want to set aside for general plan amendments, or we can dig in right now and then I could get a cost estimate, and it's probably going to align with the budget process and I can bring it back with that, or I could just do a separate staff report for funding. I kind of wanted to get a consensus from you guys on how you wanted to proceed.
That's reasonable.
At least just thinking out loud, I'm always curious in business, we always try to get a quote, see what we're looking at before we make our decisions, to me that makes sense.
I think the real question is how much did it cost us by not being able to annex? Because a lot of the policy that's in this book and yet significant economic impact to the community and to our housing element, et cetera, et cetera, because of a lot of the protectionism is in here. Lafco used this book against the city and denied annexation and growth. So I think it's critical when we look at how much money did we not receive as far as the city hall works, but I think it's also critical how much housing the people did receive because of this book. We always try to bring up the money, try to stop this, it's happened many a times. I mean, this is brought up, I mean, maybe Alac finally formulated, but I know we were trying to do something in 2016 and '17. We kept to be told we don't have the money, we don't have the movement. And 10 years later, where are we again? And again, if you didn't find it in the budget, it's not pretty to put this in there, there's no ribbon cuttings for a new general plan. Nobody gets all excited about that, but your budget is all affected by it. Police department gets shorter because we don't have growth, fire department gets shorter because we don't have growth, because we don't have the proper kind of growth aligned where we have here. End up building net negatives and not net positives that we need to. So I think it's critical that we get on top of this right away. Maybe whatever it is to find it and get it done, I think we're really, we've been at quagmire. How many houses we built last year? Let me tell you. Not hard.
I don't remember the exact number, but it wasn't very many.
Like zero? Pretty close.
Well, there's the 15 for the county, yeah, 44 for some to go to the house.
Now, basically, zero single-family residents were built, zero. I would say that we're failing, failing. Rena said we're failing because they gave us 2,400 units and we're having to suggest building up parking lots. So I think I think we really need to step up and get this done and expedite whatever we need to do to find a way to figure it out. Let's make two bits, who's next?
Customer ready.
I think that going and aligning with the budget process may be the smartest thing to do as long as it aligns with implementation of the general plan so we can find the money. Because our hands have been tied every year or every time we bring this up because we can only adjust some of the elements for the same amount of money, and EIR is always against us. So it's always costing money. So it'd be nice to know what kind of money we're talking about so that we can realign with the budget so we can know what we have and what we need to pull in so we can make the proper adjustments instead of just being handcuffed every time because of money. I think every time it comes up, it's basically not funded. And so I think aligning with the budget process could be a possibility, as you suggested, as long as it aligns with our timeframe, you know, at least to find the money first because otherwise it's all futile.
Customer.
So I think in general, I may split hairs on a few things, but I don't generally disagree. I do think that we have been squished into a little fenced-in area that it'd be great to annex a lot of things. And I do agree that in a lot of ways we have missed opportunities, include revenue, et cetera. I think my only concern, and again, hear me out on this, is that if it comes down to looking at those numbers and I got to find somewhere to pull an extra million dollars out at the expense of the library or the police department or some other function, which could be, maybe that's not how it works, but I don't want to see us cutting the services for the hopes that we make an update to a general plan and still see no benefit to those changes in 10 to 15 years. So again, I could be corrected, but just a thought.
Customer.
I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure it's Lori or Christine. There is an assumption in here that the changes drive the kind of proposal and timeline that's put here. Is there a subset of the changes that wouldn't drive this kind of schedule? Because we changed lots of other things without driving EIRs and public reviews. And so is there a subset, if you had a chance to look at the proposed changes, and is there a subset of those that would not drive this kind of effort?
Well, I can speak to that, my name's Brent Givens, I'm a principal planner at Mid-Tier Harnish. We've been leading the effort on your safety, circulation, EJ, and housing element. I've had a chance to go through all the ad hoc comments. All of those comments would signify a substantial modification to your EIR, and that's primarily where the cost is coming from. A lot of the ad hoc comment changes that are before the council this evening have to do with a switch from a preservation agricultural conservation approach to a pro-development approach. So your current 2030 EIR is all about conservation and preservation. So when we flip the script and the city would like to go more pro-development, the EIR then has to reflect pro-development policies, programs, and future land use changes that would move in that direction. So all of the ad hoc comments there specifically in the land use and conservation element would require opening up the environmental review door, and that's where the majority of that cost and time comes from. So there really isn't any of those policies that wouldn't cause a trigger environmentally concerned wise.
So for me to repeat that question a little differently.
Sure.
I want to change one should, just one. Would that drive the EIR?
Depends on the policy, if it would. Because some of those programs, right, some of those policies have programs tied to them that has in essence tied the city to a certain direction and philosophy.
So when we redid the housing element, instead we were going to go develop all those housing, that didn't drive the change?
It didn't drive the change, it didn't drive the change because it focused on infill development. It didn't look at outward expansion or annexation, which a lot of the direction that's part of the ad hoc comments looks at annexation and expansion of growth, not so much infill and densification.
Is it the general plan about our city itself?
Can you rephrase that?
Well, when we went to Lafco before, it was a sphere of influence thing. And so we didn't have any control on that area, that was common land. So my general plan, our general plan, really is about our city, right?
It is, but the way.
How is it, is the word annexation in here a bunch of times? Or is it about the agricultural, or we should do something instead of mandating? All of that looks internal to the city to me. So I'm having a little difficulty how you extrapolated to the word annexation.
I'm bringing up annexation because if the city did look to expand beyond its boundaries or to evaluate outward growth at some point, the general plan would analyze that. I'm not saying that that is exactly what the city would do, but when you start to open up the land use element, you start to look at all of those larger discussions if you're moving in a more pro-growth philosophy and way.
Well. But as of right now, I'm a little confused because.
Councilmember Bridget.
Yes, sir.
You might remember because you were on planning commission, but many of our goals in the general plan, they don't speak to just the city within the city limits. It often talks about Long Hope City and Valley residents, and it talks about housing and employment within the Long Hope Valley. So it's how those two play together. So we use annexation often because we understand that this document and the way it was designed back in 2015 or when it was originally adopted, it was more of a conservative view, I guess, for lack of a better term, and more, I would say, not pro-growth if you look at growing our boundaries out. And so there are some policies in here that, yes, you know, Lafco used against us and said, because of X, Y, and Z, you guys say in your policy you're going to do these things. And so I think that's where the annexation and referring to annexation often comes from. It's just kind of our, what we were trying to do and how this was referenced in response to that, to tell us no.
Well, I could understand what you're saying, but that's not what the black and white says. The black and white says this applies to our city, our city. And the state is asking us to develop housing, they're asking us to infill. We were able to do the housing element with that change of mentality. And now we're saying to continue that change of mentality, to bring in our city and reduce some of the regulations or the shalls so that we can go develop it appropriately, not the county, but the city. Now I have to go do an EIR. And and not only did you make the statement that I have to do it because of the totality, but you also said that I can't change one word of this without having to go do an EIR. That that challenges my credibility. I just don't quite understand that. My second question would be related to the 2050 general plan. It wasn't clear to me how soon would be a responsible development of 2050 because if I go 42 months and I don't start till 2027, I certainly would be out of the 2030 timeline. So what is the, what is the, we just went through the housing element and when I was in the planning commission, I begged for us to start a year before we started. I asked repeatedly and was told repeatedly, no, don't worry about it, it'll get done, we've got plenty of time. Now, this thing is coming to be in 2030, I assume that's the date on it. And we're saying we can do that in 2027, I guess it depends when we start, for three years. We couldn't do the housing element in three years, we're going to do a whole general plan in three years. That just doesn't seem real, I think if we're going to go down the path, we ought to just break the goal and do the general plan and get it the way we want it. And then maybe we'll get it done in my tenure.
If I may respond?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure. The city has already updated some of their elements with the economic development element, the environmental justice, as well as the housing element. But remember that the housing element gets updated every eight years. And so this will, the recent update was for 2022 to 2030. And so we will be getting additional responses from HCD after the next census. So we will be in a updated mode for the housing element in that horizon that we're talking about. And so it makes sense to look at the whole general plan when the next housing element allocations are coming from Rena numbers. And so what we're suggesting is that we look at the 2050 general plan being triggered in 2027 so that we can roll into both the, all of the elements and make sure that all of the policies and goals are consistent with each other, and then roll in the next housing element as part of that whole package that we are identifying here coming in the 2030 horizon.
And if I can just address schedule real quick, I've managed well over a dozen general plans across the state. A three-year process is completely doable. The housing element as part of what the city has undertaken has gone extensively long enough, primarily is the back and forth and modifications that HCD put the city through. HCD has 60, 90-day review periods, and through this cycle, they went well over those review periods, which then took the city along for a ride with it. It is completely doable and realistic to get a general plan done in three years, and the city can even do it faster. It depends how progressive and aggressive the city wants to take on a task like that. So just seeing what's, what showed up on here on the screen, completely doable. I think there's several other options as part of this, even. doable. I think there's several other options as part of this, even though it's a comprehensive update. We're just wrapping up the circulation and the safety element. So some of those elements are not going to have overhauls to them, because the city just put the time and effort into those. There may need to be tweaks based on state law between now and 2027 or 2028 to address, but there is some savings and some time, not only from a budget perspective, but from a time perspective as well, if the city doesn't bother.
Do you have a reason to believe that the state will be any easier on the next housing element than it was in the last housing element?
I think as part of that, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think the state comes forward with, with new things all the time. What the seventh cycle will look like is unknown at this point. The sixth cycle was definitely an overhaul from the previous five, but I do not know what to anticipate as part of that next piece.
And just, just to piggyback on that, most of the general plan updates that are occurring now are looking at expansion of spheres of influence as part of the general plans that are going forward, as well as annexations of particular areas that would make sense now versus in the future. So this next general plan definitely should be looking at the expansion of the sphere of influence and annexations that could be coming. And I do want to know that, if you're not aware, the Bodger project did submit for builder's remedy with the county of Santa Barbara. So there's about a 300-unit portion of that area on the west side of the city that is going through a city or a county planning staff review. And we have given an intent to serve letter for water and sewer with the condition that the land be annexed. And so we're working with the county to pursue that annexation as part of the builder's remedy process, which does mean we'll go back to LAFCO. But in order for that particular project under builder's remedy, does need city water and sewer to be developed. So we are somewhat working in an interesting way to accomplish what we couldn't accomplish last year.
I'm fully aware of that one. So if we did a general plan update over the next four years, are you saying, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, but are you saying, which would include a housing element update, are you saying even if we did that, we would then have to, in two years, do another housing element update?
No, no, no. You're, you're, you're correct where you're thinking. If you were to start, let's say you started next year, 2026, with a, with a general plan, that would overlap with your next housing element cycle. So you would do your seventh cycle as part of that effort. So it would, it would be folded in.
So kind of like building code, I'd get to do it under the present guidelines. I wouldn't necessarily have to do it over whatever eight years is from the last.
No, because your eight, your eight-year cycle would overlap with the preparation of the general plan. And then after that, it'd be another eight years or 16 years from now.
Okay, so.
So Councilmember Bridge, I think what you were asking, so we would amend the components of the elements, of the various elements that we wanted to change. And on the housing element, we would want to be cautious because we know we're going to get a new set of arena numbers. You know, we know all of those dynamics are going to change in eight years. So we would want to time everything so we hit all those different points.
That's a little different from what he just-
At least that was my understanding. We wouldn't change our housing element until it aligned.
You wouldn't change, you would not change your housing element that's currently certified right now. You would wait until the next cycle begins.
So we would do a general plan update without changing our housing element? That's what you're saying?
It was tied.
So there's two, two, I think we're, we're kind of mixing things up. If the council wanted to move forward and just make ad hoc changes, you would just make the ad hoc changes in the general plan, which updates land use, conservation, and economic development, it wouldn't affect the housing element. Because your housing element is certified by H C D and has an eight-year cycle. If the council was looking to do a comprehensive update in the next year or so, that preparation time for a comprehensive update would overlap the preparation of your seventh cycle housing element. And that's where those would work in tandem. And you would, and that's where most communities are heading. They'd like to try to line up a housing element with a comprehensive update, because land use change drives circulation, drives public services, and you want to analyze all of those changes at once, especially if you do look at any sphere of influence changes or recommendations.
Okay. One last question. Did I hear you say we have issued a can and will serve to the Bodger organization?
We, we have not issued a can and will serve. We gave them a statement that said, if this, then this type of thing. So if they want our utilities, they need to annex into the city. And that's what they received.
Will a can and will serve to that come to the council?
A can and will serve letter would come to city council, I believe. Is that correct?
Never.
Yes.
Was that missed or no? I couldn't tell which-
It will come to city council. We're hoping we end up doing, we don't have to do an out-of-bureau service agreement, and we get the annexation completed prior to.
So real fast, at the last LAFCO meeting, they advised that this is the time to expand lines and such, because they do their five-year sharing agreements, et cetera, et cetera. So this is the time to-
We're working on those. May I speak?
Okay. I'm just referencing out there. Getting back to, I think, what the, about seven questions ago, what Councilmember Bridge was asking. No, no, was, you know, he was referencing about the E I R, and I guess the shalls that we had on the protectionism. But when you look at the document, it was related to us considering this land in the Bailey Corridor as residential. So I think what it'd be, if there was, you shall protect agriculture on the other side of Bailey. I think there need to be qualifiers in there because we were anticipating that because of our zoning that we had in here, the anticipated zoning. So is there a way to not do the triggering E I R, if we just enforce the spirit of our general plan that might have had a flaw in there, but we anticipated, according to this map, development? And I know the county didn't recognize, one of our big holes is the county didn't recognize our sphere of influence, our urban limit lines. I guess you have to take that to the county and get their approval, too. We said this is our line in the sand of expansion and development, but the county didn't recognize what we said. That complicated matters. But getting back to the triggering of E I R, if we already had, the spirit of this was protect ag on the other side of Bailey, not on the east side of Bailey. Is there a way of modifying some of that so that we can do that that doesn't trigger E I Rs?
The way that the general plan was adopted back in 2011, and it did not include the, it planned for the outside of the sphere, but it didn't, we didn't actually change the sphere out to, to include Bodger land and out to Bailey. So right now, the city's sphere of influence is basically the city line. And that's where LAFCO was saying at their hearings, is that you're protecting that Bodger land as the agricultural land you're protecting. Because nothing in our current general plan says beyond Bailey, it just says agriculture. And so that's where our challenge is in talking about making any changes to the land use or conservation element at this time.
But if you look at our map, and you look at the map, and you look at the zoning, we recognized it to be in there. We didn't recognize this as agriculture. I don't, do we have any, we have some ag somewhere in town. We've got some ag out by McLaughlin on the other side, outside city limits. But we don't recognize agriculture in this map. We don't recognize, we recognize this as ag. So in our general plan, we're saying protect ag that's not inside our urban limit line that we were asking for. So that's, I think that's the confusion. We weren't recognizing this as ag to protect. Right? It's what a light green, is that M U? Or low density residential? What is that color of green? I don't, yeah, three greens are kind of the same color. So I mean, in that case, if we were talking about protecting ag land, well, we were referencing this land, because we didn't recognize it to be ag land. Maybe that's where the confusion was. City attorney? Question? Statement?
So if you look, just on these maps that you're referring, the sphere of influence line is the guiding line for LAFCO. And that line is co-trimidous with the city's, city's limits lines.
I'm referencing also the urban limit line.
And I understand that. I just wanted, you know-
Yes, I know.
You know, yes, the vision was to grow out there, but at the time this general plan was done, and the E I R analyzed it, it didn't take the sphere of influence. I actually moved that red line out to Bailey Avenue. And that's where the disconnect is. That's why we're suggesting that the 2050 plan, take that action and move the sphere of influence out to that location. And then we would be able to take that document to LAFCO and say, that's where we want our sphere of influence.
From what I understand, you still have to get the county, whatever line you want to move it to, the county has to accept your movement. And they didn't accept, as an example, the urban limit line, the county doesn't recognize the city's urban limit line. They have it equal to the, the city limit line. And the urban limit line is the line in the sand you draw that your sphere of influence line is going to move to. But what I'm getting at is just referencing that we don't recognize this land as agriculture. That was, maybe that was the big confusion. We didn't recognize this on Bailey. Cranny, it's between our urban limit line and the sphere of influence line is in between there. And I think if somebody really pounded down the fact that we had a sewer line down there, put in 58, 59, that's 1958, 1959, and anticipating the movement that way. But again, triggering that, though, why would this trigger E I R if we recognized this in this study, in this book, in E I R, as this to be residential land? We did, they didn't, but we did.
I, I understand your argument, that the issue and the challenge would be, is to have the environment, the environmental review would have to look at what kind of development would happen in that area that you're taking on within your sphere of boundary, and that to make sure that whatever you identified there would also be accepted by LAFCO. Because there, LAFCO is going to look at not only the land use that you're proposing, but the infrastructure plan, how are you going to deal with water, sewer, roads, and all of that analysis, which would have to be included in the package that you take to LAFCO.
I remember those meetings way back, way 10-plus years ago. And the discussion was that we stayed outside of Bailey, we stayed west of, let ag stay over there. And we're going to drop buffer lines and all this and that. But our whole anticipation was that we considered this. So somewhere it wasn't the flaw that we didn't do the sphere of influence line at that time? We assumed the urban limit line? I mean, was there some assumption that the city failed on at that time? Because we had just fully anticipated development there. You had people putting plans together. There was 2,200 housing units that were going to build up in there. And it was anticipated, and the E I R was done in this book, anticipating those housing units.
And I think what we're trying to explain is that you do have illustrations within the general plan and in the E I R from 2010 and 13, that era. But the policies say something different. And so we're rolling, we're trying to reconcile the discrepancies between what was intended by the city council at that time and the landlords at that time with the policies that were adopted. And there's a conflict there. And what LAFCO and others have done is use those words against you when they, when you brought that annexation forward. And so what we need to do, either as an ad hoc effort, or as a full general plan update, is reconcile the words that were in these policy documents to say, we will expand to the west side of Long Hope, or we will take in this agricultural land to Bailey. Much more action-oriented, direct statements rather than some of the statements that say protect agriculture, or protect the resource, have some more definitive statements as on the direction that the city is going to go.
As an example, policy 5.2, the city shall protect primatag lands east of the city and west of the urban limit line. So our urban limit line was Bailey Avenue. So we made that statement in here. But I guess they still use the sphere of influence, because we didn't put the sphere there.
Correct.
For some reason, we were thinking the urban was acting, and we should have said sphere. And we should have moved the sphere out there.
Correct.
Which, I mean, historically, if you go back, I think you see that our sphere of influence lines used to be Florida, and it used to be all Union Sugar at one time. We had a lengthy discussion about 10 years ago about that, how little by little that line kept moving inward. And then I guess we kind of choked ourselves out.
And I do want to touch on reconciling some of the differences between the mapping and the policy. Reading through the policy, evaluating that, and talking with your city staff, it has handcuffed the city significantly. There's terminology that's used in the policy, which the county, LAFCO, has used and will continue to use. When you talk about densification, urbanization, infill development, transitional buffers between development, protection, preservation of ag, inward focus, that is a style of development that isn't necessarily seen as typically pro-growth. So I think that there is an opportunity here, whether it is through modifications through ad hoc comments or modifications through a comprehensive update, to rewrite that story, rewrite that vision for where the city wants to head at the direction of council, and then analyze what land use changes could come about because of that, and what those impacts could potentially be with a more pro-growth look for the community. How's verbal?
So I have a couple of questions. Might be a little bit all over the place, but bear with me. Try to help me understand a little bit of this. Look, and I'll say this point blank. I've heard from so many people over the years about the idea of protecting primatag land. I have a lot of respect for that, and I could go through a list of reasons why. But I want to illustrate something that, again, gives me pause on this topic, and it has to do with that builder's remedy issue up there, is that we're learning that we weren't able to annex that area. The group is able to submit plans to the county and kind of, we don't have any control over the look and feel, per se, but they're able to build on primatag land, and then we're going to annex that into the city. So if someone else on Bailey Avenue decides to sell their property, could be in the same boat that this is kind of a backdoor annexation, so to speak. So there is, I'm losing a lot of, it's harder and harder for me to say, well, we just want to protect everything out there, because there are now methods that the state's put in place to say, you know, you may have a good intention, but we're going to let them build because we don't have housing. So for those that are just absolutely against any primatag land adjustments, I just want you to know that the state and the county, they're going to build stuff if they so choose, and if private property owners choose so. So it would be nice for us to have influence over some of that. So I think I agree with that in general. I was curious, because you brought up something about, you know, if we are going to move that line all the way out there, we can't just say, hey, we had a plan for 2,200 homes. We also have to take into account how that's going to affect circulation, all these other things. I'm curious, does the environmental justice update, does that play a role in working with this at all, in terms of like, if we were to expand it with the policies that we put in place at the E J level, would that influence what could or should be imagined in that annex space? I know that's a really crazy-
Potentially, but potentially. But when we did the E J element, we looked at, we looked at several of the, several of the census tracts that went beyond the city limits to try to be as encompassing as possible, so right on the fringe areas. So I don't think you're going to have as much of an E J issue. You still will have, still have issues with- You still will have, still have issues with when it comes to like pesticide use adjacent to residential, if you expand out. But I can say with certainty, other elements, they'll need to be looked at again. Public services, safety, circulation. Because if you are, if the city does look to propose a change of sphere of influence, that's going to change the growth pattern, the development pattern, the circulation pattern. How much is the potential for new development? What would that do to the population? And what would that need to have for more adequate services to meet that demand of population? That's where you lean more towards a comprehensive update because you want to make sure you're covering all of that. Another example, as part of the updates that we're working with your staff on right now, we're not analyzing public services and we're not analyzing parks, parks and recreation. That's something that you would analyze as part of that. So that kind of leans toward a comprehensive update.
Awesome.
So I guess comprehensive updates take into account SOI changes?
And again, I think I'm kind of understanding, but it seems like a discussion here is, do we do a last second, you know, critical update to the 2030 to implement some of these things? Or you're looking at more of a 2050, big picture? But then we're talking about how long will that take? So I understand that too. Just throwing it out there, again, it sounds like if you wanted to do some large updates, large updates don't come without cost. So again, I, you know, the last four years, the council went from nothing in reserves to close to eight, nine, 10 million dollars. If the argument is, is that we have not, that we missed a lot of opportunity in financial and economic growth as a result of being so constricted, it sounds like a rainy day to me. So throw it out there.
If I may just make one question?
Yes.
In regards to the Bajer Meadows project, I just want to make sure the city council understands that that application was filed before this county senate barber adopted their housing element. So it's actually a builder's remedy project. And it's, I'm going to call it, it's a one-off project because the county has adopted their housing element now and there's not another opportunity for another project on that area to be filed.
Got a loophole there, short-term loophole they found. It is this week.
I wanted to add something that I've been thinking about and I feel like it's relevant here. I haven't brought it up to council yet, but neighboring jurisdictions that have been very successful with growth and annexation, conducted something that we haven't done here yet. And I wanted, as part of the 2050 general plan update on my to-do list, is also evaluating an annexation study for the city of Long Poak, where you receive public input and you do more of a comprehensive analysis. And we look beyond just, can we get our line out just a little bit further? But looking at what we need, not just housing, but commercial and industrial, what does this city need to thrive? And I think an annexation study could be looped into our 2050 general plan update. And I think it'd be very beneficial to Long Poak in the long run. It's just, it costs a little more money. But because this takes four years to complete, at least if we were strategic with this effort, we could draw those costs out and take it out over four years. I think our finance director would greatly appreciate that. We don't have a lot of money in our general plan maintenance fund. I want to say it might be a couple hundred thousand. I didn't check. Maybe Dean checked recently. But it's just not a significant dollar amount right now. So as we get more building permits issued, river tariffs, if we can get that annexation complete and get those Bajer Meadow ones issued, like it could all line up perfectly where we're coming less out of that general fund reserve money that, you know, could go to the cool ribbon cutting stuff. That was kind of the strategic thought there from my perspective.
And if I may weigh in real quick on this.
So answer your question, they did do the annexation study on this on the current one. They went around and around.
Only for Roger.
No?
And only looked at Roger. How long ago?
No. We did, we did all the way up, going up in Magalito, they did going east, they did going north. They had several meetings. This is probably 12 years ago or so. They did, they went and they did the whole long-term process on it. And they still got, like I said, the spirit of this book did not get enacted.
Do you, Mayor, do you feel like the community's vision and perhaps even the political viewpoint outside of the area, the county, LAFCO, has shifted at all to better support for the growth for Long Poak? I just feel like we have so much in our court nowadays with the demands from the state for housing and, you know, looking at tax base and things like that. I just always wondered if another look at it from the current viewpoint in the current time could help us.
I don't think, I think there's a couple of reasons. I think there's the fact that South County has a surplus of jobs and wants to keep us as indentured servants to drive down that way. That hasn't changed. They have 25,000 surplus jobs. They would support us, and they said that, if we would build workforce housing for the jobs we don't have. But if you have that, then you would drive down there. I was told by several South County politicians, they would support us annexing Bajer if it was workforce housing and high-speed training. That was what they're, and they're still there, that's their thought process. So there's, that is a key. So I don't think the temperature, the waters really change, except for the fact that we are mandated an arena for 2,400 housing units. And we've seen that we really have failed in growth and development. We're stagnant for 25 years, basically, with population and little in our housing growth, little in it. So I, I just think that the desperation in our community is such, that people realize we need housing. You know, we're stacking people up. It is tough and it's hard to get inventory. Councilmember Ball, he's mentioned many times the frustration of trying to get that home. You know, we should have a 3% to 5% vacancy rate in there. That stimulates a movement. We don't have that. So I don't necessarily see it, but I know, kind of know what happened to this book. I went to those meetings and saw what the spirit was. And a lot of times you wait for the transition, you know, council change is over and then somebody gets something through. If people forget what the shells and should was, and you get this book up in front of you, hopefully more than on a Friday night, and then you have a Tuesday to process it. So I kind of see some of that happen and watching them. I've been involved for 15 years with this, watching what's been going on. It's, we have, really, this book has failed the people of Long Poak in what the demand was. We had multiple, multiple meetings and this group filled up with people wanting to know where they're going to annex and where we're going to grow. They were going to go over here on Segrely Hill, big discussion, put 30 units over there. It was a discussion all the way around. And we really did this book fail the people. Councilmember Vega?
Just to make a comment, that I was on the original ad hoc committee with Councilmember Starbucks. Again, this is Tamora and the other planner here, sir. Can you give me a little bit of an update again on what happened to the comments? A little refresh, I think I went through it already. What happened to the ad hocs comments back in that day from what you can perceive?
They're incorporated here. We have them here to present to you tonight. We've kind of digressed, but my goal was to get you to the comments and we're ready to get consensus from the council as an entire body on which way you want to proceed. And I think, as you know, Councilmember Vega, we can't change things that, we can't even bring forward, you know, changes to something based on only two council members' input. So our goal was to bring you yours and Councilmember Starbucks' comments and then get consensus from everybody that that is how you want to change these things. And then come back. And those are the options that I'm trying to find out right now. Do you want me to wait until after and just put a dollar amount in the budget for these changes? Or do you want me to proceed with these one-off changes once we get consensus from all of you? But we do have them to present.
So you want to hear it your way, not my way? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Does it sound like you were worried me and, you know, you told me I had to do it this way and we're not going to do it that way?
I can bring them up right now.
You want to ask the questions?
I can bring them up right now if you'd like.
I just want to ask the questions so that I can come back and we can make consensus where we're going. We've always been cashed out. We always have that same excuse. The question I have here was, in the expansions that we have, was the EIR, the original EIR, did it include the Bailey Corridor? That was done on the 2030 general plan? Because it sounded where there was some wordsmithing here, which was in generalities, which was basically, it ended up helping the county. And it really wasn't set in stone as far as expansion because urban limit line, once upon a time, was way out there towards surf, you know? So through the years, it's been brought back in. So, does anybody know?
The EIR that was created for the job plan was from 2010. And that one reflects the maps that are in the job plan. And it does include the urban limit line, but it has the sphere co-terminus with the city limits.
That's a no. Is that correct?
It reflects the exhibit that may almost be provided, which shows the urban limit line out to Bailey, but it does, the sphere is co-terminus with the city limit line. So it doesn't include Bajer Meadows.
Okay. And you know, it just, it just looks like the EIR was used to support infill because additional housing and was studied for Bailey Corridor expansion. So the way I read it was it was, there was a U-turn on that. Or infill now is number one instead of housing or any kind of expansion. That's what the question I'm asking you, is that what you may saw also?
The EIR does support that philosophy that is backed up in the policy that is part of the pact that it is. Yes?
So a number of jurisdictions now that are updating their general plans are coming back with an analysis in their EIR of infill development and looking at all of the properties that could potentially be built up, which was done through the housing element just recently. But they also are looking at expansion. So it's, it's both. It's not just prioritizing infill, but it's looking at expansion. City of Santa Maria is going through this right now with a sphere of influence and annexation, EIR and general plan. Wholesale updated their general plan. And that includes looking at east side of the freeway. So that is a much more strategic way of updating your general plan is looking at all of the elements as well as looking at growth, both infill and expansion.
So the housing element is the direction we need to go in by updating it, correct?
Sorry, say that again?
Here on Long Poak, the housing element needs to be updated here for Long Poak, if that's what our direction is, or the council's direction is?
Well, the housing element was in an infill plan. It did not look at expansion. And so, you know, the next generation that we're talking about, basically the 2050 plan, would look at both infill and expansion.
Yeah, and that's what I was looking for, for clarity. So thank you. I appreciate that.
And if I may, I do want to echo what Ms. Alacron was saying about the annexation study. It was mentioned that that was done 10 to 12, 12 years ago. A comprehensive general plan does an alternatives analysis, which is similar to that. It looks at different ways that growth can occur from an expansion, sphere of influence, urban limit line, whether it's infill, and starts to weigh all of the differences for how development, how development can occur within the city of Long Poak. And then how does policy then align with that? So when you do a comprehensive update, you do an alternatives update, which is basically going back to that prior annexation study and updating essentially. Councilmember.
I have several questions now that I've heard on this. Is it Tamora, is it? Am I pronouncing that correctly? Ms. Tamora, is that correct?
Yeah, Lori Tamora.
Tamora, okay. Did you just make the statement that Santa Maria is now initiating a general plan update which includes the housing element?
Yes. Actually, they initiated their general plan update in 2021. It was right when COVID hit, or during COVID. And so it's taken them additional time to do this. But they are doing their environmental impact report right now on a alternative plan that would include infill and expansion of the city boundary and sphere of influence with annexations. And it'll look at the east side of the freeway from Betel Rima to Main Street.
So didn't they just complete their housing plan as well?
Again, they did adopt their housing element and it did get certified by HCD, but it was an infill housing element. It was identifying.
Because they're, because they're pro-growth.
Yes.
They're not going to wait till the next cycle to update their general plan?
No, they're starting, they started.
Two years ago.
Because their, their general plan, the last time they did it was 1993.
But their face with the same housing plan issue that we just discussed is.
Correct.
Constrict to going forward with a general plan update.
And Councilmember Bridge, if I can jump in here. The city of Santa Maria started their, their general plan five plus years ago. And that is when the sixth cycle for Santa Maria's housing element started at the same time. So they did those in tandem. That's, that's, it's different than how Long Poak handled the elements right now. Certain elements were brought forward, then the housing element came forward and they were two separate entities. So that, so it was a more holistic approach to what Santa Maria did. And that's part of the 2050 proposal that staff is, is putting out there for council's consideration is for the seventh cycle housing element, there's the opportunity to have the comprehensive update and the seventh cycle done at the same time.
Now, when we did the housing element, six months ago, whatever it was now, I was repeatedly admonished for trying to take in areas that were outside of my existing sphere of influence. Now, what I'm hearing you saying, I probably don't hear it correctly, but it sounds like now you're saying, no, if we start now and say we're going to expand, then we will be able to use that in the housing element, even though I was not able to put that in the housing element in the last cycle. What, what about misunderstanding?
So the strategy of staff over the last couple of years was to use that 2010 EIR, which was focused on infill development and use it. And we've amended or we've done addendums to that EIR eight different times for different planning documents and policies over the last 15 years. And what staff was recommending for the housing element, this go-around, was to still use that 2010 EIR because it would be less expensive than doing a brand-new EIR for the housing element, this go-around. So it, I think it was a strategic recommendation to the city council is to continue to tear off of that original 2010 EIR for many of these updates because it's more cost-effective. What we're suggesting is that when we get to a decision to move forward with the 2050 plan, you're going to have to cover up a brand-new EIR because you now aren't going to be planning for the expansion of the city of Long Poak.
Okay, so you just told me I've done eight amendments or addendums to existing EIR, but because we want to make some changes from shoulds to shall, I now have to go do an EJ hangout?
It would be the ninth amendment to that EIR.
Christie, what did our housing element cost us?
Housing element, circulation, EJ, and?
It's a typical sum of the.
650,000 so far as we're at.
And what are you budgeted for the safety?
No, that's everything included. And I'm already over budgeted. Safety was in there. That 650 was safety.
Okay.
Councilmember.
A couple of quick comments. Christie, going back to the idea, and again, I don't want to argue with anyone, but if there has been an annexation study in the past, I think that a lot of that data is probably still relevant. But I'm just admitting that a lot has changed in 12, 13 years. I mean, we've got commercial space that, again, was, they were talking about the idea that, and now it's here and it's thriving. You know, seven, eight years ago, we were looking at the cannabis industry was going to change everything here. That's, it's not our fault either way. That's, it's not our fault either way, it's just the way it's gone, it's changed too. So, when it comes down to some of these decisions on how will people live, how close will they be to certain things, what is shopping like, what's the outlook, what's the big picture of the community? To me, I still find relevance in getting an updated idea of what this community feels and thinks about that issue. I find that one of them. And then again, you said you're just looking for consensus, and I see all of these things listed here, there's not even consensus between the two folks on the ad hoc. Some, Mr. Starbuck might have said just take it out, and Mr. Vega said, look, maybe reword it. There are some of these that I don't necessarily agree with, but I may be in the minority here. So if you're looking for full consensus, we can go through this, but this will take us all night to argue one by one. That's that far. And I'm just curious, you mentioned San Maria and their, their whole update, kind of got a sense of how much money we might have in the bank to do some of this. Did you guys hear numbers how San Maria is paying for this? Are they standing up their financial structure for this? Do that money already sound like a bit?
Because the city of San Maria, and I'm a land use planner and do a lot of work in San Maria also, and so we're currently participating in the update of the general plan in San Maria. They did get a number of grants, which is an opportunity for the city of Long Po to pursue for their general plan update, but it's in the realm of about $2 million of processing over the last four years. One of their grants, there's an obligation of completing the project by the end of this year. So they're under the gun to complete it. There's going to be lots, you'll be hearing a lot about the city of San Maria's general plan update over the next couple of months.
And if I may just chime in here real quick. One big difference between San Maria's update and Long Po is the fact that San Maria started a comprehensive update where they had not updated their general plan since 1993. The difference here is, over half of your elements are updated as of 2025. So, there, there, there is a big difference. If you remember, earlier in the presentation, there was a comparison table that had some optional elements, parks and rec, urban design, public services. There's probably four or five elements that have not been updated, but half the general plan has. So it would be a very different looking process, and it would be different in cost and scope as well. It would not reach the same level that, that San Maria is under.
So if the city members would like to pursue some of the ad hoc comments, we can do that now, or we can get direction from you, how you'd like to pursue.
Let me see if there's any public comment on the first. Howard, Howard plus to be back first.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Long Po. So I was on the planning commission when we first, first I was a community member who came in and there were some significant changes being made, and became kind of activism. So I've been following this general plan and everything since probably 2006, 2008, 2009, 10, on and on. I'm very much confused listening to all this tonight, because I've read the RENA document and the housing element, and all the justifications for the expansions in the newly identified sites refer back and have negative declarations on the EIR. And I spoke into this when you were as a planning commissioner, Councilman Bridge, and they have been used to justify that the expansion in the infill is a negative declaration because this growth, these housing units, circulation. If you take the time and go element for element in your general plan and your old EIR, all of this was already accounted for, and that is why you've been able to piggyback, as Mrs. Tamora just mentioned, and not have a brand-new EIR. So, when, the intent for the Bailey corridor, there were items done. Now, some of the more specific things would need to be updated in, in the EIR, were because different developers were going to have specific projects, and those costs were going to be passed to those developers when they brought those specific projects. So then they would have to incur some of that weight of the cost burden, and the city not carry that entire cost burden. But the generality, you couldn't get to a sphere of influence, you couldn't get to the next step until you had a plan. So part of the insight of the councils in the past was, hey, let's, let's create this plan, let's do a, a, kind of a general EIR that included X amount of housing, X amount of commercial, all that was studied. And then the more fine details were going to be studied as individual projects came to fruition. And the proof of that is, again, it's in your mitigated EIR or revised EIR that you just did for the housing element to justify going from three stories to five stories, to justify taking a parking lot that had no housing to a parking lot that had 60 housing units. So I would, if I were you, I would take a, a break, not rush into this, because fundamentally, whatever you decide is going to change the course of this town forever. I don't know what keeps coming in place. Maybe it's the fact that we've had several people who've made millions of dollars on selling farm preservation credits. Maybe it's from the environmental defense center and the others that has sued us consistently. But it, it, it's a lot bigger than we think is preventing this.
Did that gentleman, other guy left?
All right, we'll close public comment then and bring you back. It's you guys' pleasure to go through your comments, or we already have to give one to each of you? I already have a comment. All right, so, you may want to talk? Microphone, anybody?
Are you, so you have consensus you want to proceed with looking at the ad hoc comments? And I wanted to add.
Just asking, did you see if anybody?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking.
You're all right. So just asking, if anybody wanted to go on the microphone, what do you want to do there? Councilor Bridge?
I'm just trying to understand, are you suggesting we're going to go comment by comment? Or, what I'm kind of hearing, Councilman Vega is saying per axle, just carte blanche and simple? But I'm confused what you're asking.
Well, I'm asking you, what would you like to do? We've got to hear your.
I think you guys, if we're going to say we're going to go forward with it, which was kind of what this discussion was all about, then I kind of feel like you almost have to go line by line. This is a pretty extensive set of red lines. I don't want to sit here for the next.
We have a, we kind of have a, yeah, we, we're aware of the time constraint, and we weren't sure we were going to get through it all tonight anyway. So we kind of have that, we've had it broken down into the elements, and then we kind of have some, I guess, philosophical question to kind of decide, do we need to dig into that element specifically? But I think it might be helpful, Mayor Mosby, to gain consensus, and then as we get into each element, maybe just gain consensus from the council if, after reviewing slide, what does it say there? I think it says 16 at the bottom. But reviewing those, I think there's three pages that are economic development element comments. If you can glance at those or read them, and Councilmember Vega and Starbuck probably already remember, but just tell us, yeah, let's dig into these, and then get, you know, three of you agree, let's dig in and let's do that, if that makes sense.
Really, Councilor Ball, then, Councilor Vega? Oh, Councilor Vega? And now, I'm on the tail of a goat here. Anyway, I just think that, I wasn't giving it carte blanche, what I was saying is, we already have a PowerPoint, we have, for the, no, 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 what I, what I was, I always want to, okay? That we can read, we can see, if you guys have questions, have questions, but it wasn't a carte blanche, okay? To say, listen, whatever, I was just asking a question, if anybody has any concerns, otherwise I think we should move forward and use our time wisely and ask appropriate questions. Because obviously, I think the housing element's the first one that I would like to see changed. It seems like the other ones, there's some of these I want to probably not even change, but we probably need to go through that. So I'm not sure exactly what your schedule is on how they want to proceed. We'll go from there. Councilor Starbuck, what do you have to say?
Pass it.
Pass it.
I have a question, if I may. Councilor Ball? When did these, when, I mean, I've been around, I forget many minutes, but when were these ad hoc comments finalized?
Originally, it was 2021, is that true? 2020?
And again, we may have disagreements on little things here and there, sphere of influence, this and that. I'm just, I'm just curious because, you know, we've learned, just in my four years, five years, almost being here, there's so much changes, new mandates happen all the time, so much is in flux. My, my concern is that, I'm not sure, you know, you made a decision or had thoughtful input in 2021 on a certain item, most of this may still be absolutely the same, irrelevant. But I'm, you know, line by line, I'm curious if there's things that have changed within our community, with the outlook or the way it's coming together. Is this, I mean, if we just passed everything carte blanche, is this all still equally relevant? Nothing's changed?
That's a great question.
We haven't talked about any impacts on some things.
No, no, the, the housing element, I believe, is one of the most important things for expansion that we're concerned with right now. I'm not sure about the rest of it, you know, as far as what you guys' concerns were. I, I know that right here, when you go back to the ad hoc committee, it always came down to lack of funding. So we didn't make any changes, we minimized the changes. And I believe that back staff and whoever, they, they wordsmithed it to a point where they wanted to read, because obviously it wasn't done for the benefit of, oh, we weren't clear. You know, it goes hand in hand, you know? As far as do we want expansion, we don't want expansion, I think that falls on us if, if there was no clarity. You know, in, in general, were we playing politics, what, what happened there? You know, I think right now, if we do anything, we should be direct, what do we want? Because obviously, Ms. Tamora and the planners said, it was vague. So do we want expansion, do we want to move the urban limit line, do we want housing, do we want commercial development, do we want to preserve property rights for the owners' property rights, for the people that might have wanted to expand or still do at the Bailey corridor, you know? There was many people there, but I believe most of, the majority of the owners wanted that expansion at the time. So these are direct questions we should ask, of what we want our city to be like, and do we want the urban limit line to, to move out a little bit? Because right now, they said we couldn't move past, was it Bailey or Z Street? And that's what kind of handicapped us because we didn't have all our dots lined up. Councilor Starbuck?
I, I can, real quick, a little history on this, you know? We did the general plan, we did it in a year when we did our update. It had been ongoing, but we finished it in a year, we put it down, and we moved on to the zoning ordinance. We could finally align the zoning ordinance to our general plan. That went on. In the meantime, we were trying annexations. Well, you see what happened, the general plan wasn't working. So at this point, we started an ad hoc. Let's change some things. The intent was to not drive it out to where it's been now, was to go ahead and bring it to the council back then, this has been a decade now, and say, okay, this was a should should, and I watched the planning commission up here, should should themselves for hours. There are some changes here that are, these changes were meant to not happen all at once. They were to be brought in slowly. We knew the economic development element, it was brand new, it was a volunteer element. It was done by an economic development committee, we had a consultant look at it, we included it. There's some things that need to be changed. You know, 50% of business licenses gone to economic development and all this, we know this isn't going to happen. These shouldn't have triggered any kind of an EIR if we'd have gone in and just taken a few select phrases and went, let's delete should and make it should. Let's get rid of this part of the sentence. These were all small changes. In a couple of years, we could have probably tricked them in and been done and not triggered anything when we did other elements. I mean, now we've turned it into updating the whole general plan on a million-dollar project. It's not that much.
Councilor Ball? So, I really appreciate Councilmember Starbuck mentioning that, gives me some perspective. And I, and I don't mean any, I'm just trying to, this is a huge list, lots of things, and I'm not saying that anything is on here is petty. But, I will say that we probably all agree that there are some things that are like in the, in the scheme of us trying to imagine a different community, different borders, that's maybe irrelevant to that. But there are definitely other items here that are super relevant, super important. So I'm just wondering, and again, that's why I feel overwhelmed, is this massive list going to change all of this just, just because Dirk said, remove, 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 remove? To me, that's not a discussion, that's not impacts, but perhaps this council could come together, we could think a bit, we could change the outlook for the next 20 years, but maybe put it into something that's bite-sized, and then put it into a timeline that's cheap. To me, this seems, there's no one here to talk about these changes, and this is a lot, these are big. And I'm not necessarily against the changes, I, you hear me.
Maybe, maybe a suggestion would be to digest this and come back in a couple of weeks? Yep.
That would give me some time to separate the ones that I think are more important and maybe some, but I don't.
Likewise, the public might get a chance. I mean, it would be nice to have this a little bit before, before the meetings, we can see it, but I'm glad we got it, I'm glad the ad hoc got it to us. I think that would be the logical thing, we don't, we can, you know, you know what I'm saying? The city manager, city attorney, that's something to deal with, we could come back in a couple of weeks or a month.
If I may, I'll just say from my perspective, if the idea is for the city to gain clarity on detail and consensus, and really get some sort of direction that makes sense, I'd love to have some input on this. But I also don't think you'll get that consensus if it's no discussion. So, this will give me time to dig in, sink my teeth into it, maybe ask questions, what were you thinking, what was the discussion on some of these? That would be helpful to me, and I hope the public might show.
I do have a question, a little time. Councilor Vega?
Either Christie or the planners, okay? When we, when we're wordsmithing this to a point where we can do it and minimize the impacts here, the shoulds and the shoulds, how do you guys handle those, okay? I mean, from a development standpoint? Can you kind of give us your overview if somebody comes in? The way I understood it, should means you have to, shoulds mean you might, okay? And maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, so it gives you guys the latitude, but the other way, you guys could probably let the guy, let him off the hook on a certain element or a certain development standard? Am I understanding that correctly, so everybody else understands here? I mean, the shoulds, the shoulds, the kind of, the should is set in stone. Am I understanding that correctly from your guys' standpoint?
You are understanding that correctly. So, a, a should has teeth, a should typically is regulated, it has implementation tied to it. That is direction from commission and council to staff to implement. So when you have should, it's very strong language. And typically, you'll find like an implementation program, a zoning regulation, or another form of, of policy. Should leaves the door open and has a little more of a gray area, but more flexibility on the direction that that could ultimately take in the future. So it's not, you know, set in stone, precise, you are correct.
So in your opinion, there are areas where the should should be in place, mandate, or do we have that latitude? Or does it make it harder on you guys to get something through that way? And, you know, I guess for the sake of argument, is that what we create, some sort of an argument of state when we have too many shoulds? Is that a fair question? So we don't want to make it more work for you, what we're trying to do is streamline this so someone is actually, they want to come here, they want to do something, you know what I'm saying? Maybe it's a give and take, I'm not sure how you guys do this.
It is, it is a give and take. I do think that there are areas where you should have a should, and you're required to have a should based on state mandates. You can't put a should in there. But there are other areas that give flexibility to the city on, on where the city would like to head over the next 20 years, where a should is, is, is more appropriate. The more shoulds you have, the more vague it is, and it is hard for your departments to then implement and report back. And a lot of times, if you have, if you've seen general plans that have a lot of shoulds, a lot of decisions come back to planning commission, come back to council, or appealed because it's not clear. So it is, it is important to make this, as you had mentioned, Councilmember Vega, make this clear, cut, upfront, black and white, what the city wants, and the general plan should march that way through mapping, should. And the general plan should march that way through mapping, should march that way through policy, program, and so forth.
Because I want to make it fair for staff also, but the same token, because nobody wins if you can't get it through, and we're sitting here throwing stones, you know what I mean, so to speak? So, in the plan check area, does that ever come up where everyone's just arguing over what you say they have to do or what they don't?
Well, most projects have to, when they come before planning commission or council, they have to be consistent with first your general plan, policy direction. And if it's not clear, then there has to be an interpretation which leaves the room open for vague.
Because I've heard of people coming back for, how many plan checks? Can you give me an example of someone that just comes back, and comes back, and comes back, when it should be fairly simple, not clear?
I think from a staffing perspective, at least what I've encountered, is if there's any flexibility with a should instead of a shall, that's something that's typically presented to the planning commission, and we let the policymaker make that decision, consider all of the reasoning behind it.
Thank you for those explanations, thank you. Jerry, as you know, Councilman Ball, it's good for us to talk about all this so we can know what we're doing, and how, you know, as we go back and go through the list and choose the most important things for us. So as the mayor said, so we don't trigger, and Councilman Starbuck, least amount of triggers, say this one else, so thank you. Let me get Councilman Vega.
If we're going to subdivide this, I would suggest that we take all the comments out and put them in a pile that impact agriculture. Because we're not going to make that kind of change without a bunch of work. Then we bring that to other subset, maybe organized by element. And I think we might be able to walk through and resolve quite a few of these. And then, the agriculture, my personal opinion is it's a pretty small element of our town. And we should move that into the next general plan section because that's a change of a whole philosophy. And we're going to spend hours discussing ag land and why we should protect it and why we shouldn't. But there's a lot of stuff in there you guys put some work on. And it was a way to resolve some of the issues we're seeing in the community. That seems like a bite sizable, if that's an English language, way to approach it. And that is a kind of a self-serving piece of this. If any of us have comments that we would like to get incorporated, perhaps we could do those at the same time.
Mayor. If I could, if I could, this guy.
Oh, there we are.
A lot of times, our resources dictate what we can and can't do. When we look at the 650, it took for the housing element, about 70% of that came out of reserves, the general fund reserves. We wouldn't have been able to do that if we weren't in a sound financial position. Right now, as we look at 1.2 million, that's going to be a strategy that we have to incorporate into budget. And the way we try and pay for this, and it might be the reason why Santa Maria was able to do it faster than us, is we usually charge when everybody pulls a building permit, and we put it in a maintenance fund, but we really haven't been building that much, so we don't have a lot in that fund to make a lot of decisions. So my recommendation, I know you guys have a goal, is probably take, like they're talking about it, a more comprehensive approach, and strategically make sure those resources that we're utilizing are used to the best of our abilities, so. It's going to take a while to get 1.2 million together, but you can do it. But right now, our fund balance is not healthy to just pull it out right now and do the whole thing. But we should be able to do it in the next four or five years, if we put like 200, 300,000 in the year's line for this plan.
The only comment I have, I respect everything you just said. But I've got four years. And this idea that we're going to push things out five years, just, it sends a spike in my head.
Well, I don't think we should.
You can't.
I don't think it should.
I've heard this several times, though, let's, let's work it later, let's put it off, we don't have the resources. I truly understand and respect that, but I'm letting you know where I'm coming from, four years.
Yeah, I like that, I just think that we need to be strategic in what our approach is going to be. I like what Santa Maria is doing, and I think Lori is a great resource for us to bounce stuff off of and come up with a plan and come back to you guys after you had a chance to look at these comments. I know a lot of us have already seen these, and we are, I think we're all on the same page, so.
Councilor Ball, just real quick, just going back to the shalls and the shoulds. And so, I think we're all in agreement that there should never be a blanket, just change all shalls and shoulds. Because, in what we're talking about learning today, is that some of those shalls actually give a lot of clarity to staff from now forward, and it gives clarity to the community, is that fair? So again, I think if we have a couple of weeks or months to go back, I'd love to look into a couple of these shalls and shoulds. I do have a couple of questions. I'll keep an open mind to all of those things, but I think, again, I'm seeing a lot of just change. I'd love to know if some of these are actually going to move the big picture needle, and if not, maybe they are a subset of something. And to Councilmember Bridges' point, if we can talk about high level, what can we change that actually creates a change, ideally leads towards development, within a handful of years before we die?
So, we can bring this back and we call the changes we want, we're not going to implement anything. And I think you guys feel the tension of the water that we have. Two of them have reported that, maybe we could, upon ourselves, the three of us, read on what we have here, because the ad hoc is supposed to help expedite and move something forward. Five years later, it's not very expedited. Maybe we can take a look at this, bring it back, understanding, now that you guys can see the temperature of what we're feeling, so you know what we're getting at, because obviously, we're not going to, you know, you heard from the city manager that we're financially not moving forward to doing something fully efficient. But I think with our budget coming up, if we could get this done, maybe bring it back, is a month? Can we bring this back in a month? Say yes.
I think I believe the planning, and them guys are.
Part of bringing it back is that we are going to have time as a council to observe it, read it, do it ourselves, and then we can come back and go over it like you're talking about doing right now.
I think just because it has budget implications, that was one of the reasons I wanted to get consensus before you start putting money to whatever it is you want to do in the next two-year cycle. Or, I mean, because I think, aren't we doing budget next, isn't it April? We have budget meetings coming up, where you're going to look at the CIP and operational budgets. I feel like you should know how much this is going to cost you, so you can either set aside or plan for that. But if we don't want to do that, I can bring it back after the budget hearings, and I just don't know where you want me to fit it in.
Councilor Vega. Mr. Moore and the other planner, you know, you guys have, you guys, they've already given us a lot of information on the wordsmithing of it, so how do we incorporate anything that we can improve? Because they saw what was in the general plan that kind of prevented us from expansion. I think their goal, resource, to work with staff somehow. Wordsmithing some of that, so if we want development, we want expansion, and we want the development to be included in the new revenue numbers, so that that's part of the process. I think part of it was, it wasn't included, so what happened is they ran off and used the end of fill instead of housing because it wasn't worded correctly, or we weren't clear on what direction we want. So you're coming here about impacting any of the services. I think that a lot of the, if we can get grants and we can get some money here to do this, it's going to enhance the services that we need someday if we push this through, because I think that fire, police, everyone's going to argue to include these, you know, they can't. I don't think they can do, provide the same service for the expansion if it comes through, you know, without some sort of enhancement. So I think if we look at it through that lens, we can do some good here. So, unless you guys have some suggestions here, and if staff has some suggestions, I'd love to hear them, how we can expedite this and do a little wordsmithing of just, not just the shalls and the shoulds, I don't want to just focus on just that.
I appreciate the question, and I believe that Councilman Bridge had a good recommendation. The issue of agriculture is probably the linchpin to the whole conversation that we're having here. And if we could go through these suggested changes and wordsmithing and defer the conversation about agriculture to the next generation of the general plan, I think we could accomplish something in the short term, doing the rest of the policy statements in this document to address other concerns that were raised by the ad hoc committee. And that would be much more cost-effective.
You know, the fact that we need AFCO to expand, there's no guarantee they're going to go along with anything, no matter what we wordsmith, is that correct?
Well, and that's my concern, is that we know that there's outside influences, particularly on the agricultural issue, and so, I think that it does need a bigger lift to address how the city is going to expand and impact agriculture. And, but there's other things that were raised in these comments that I think we can address internally of the city, and those are things that we could do a shorter run at.
No, Lori, by expanding the urban limit line and what we do here, is that also, is that infringing on the ag side of it? So, does that turn out to be a negative? Or does that have to be incorporated to allow for, or wordsmithing to allow for expansion?
I think the point of this conversation today was that the changes to the general plan lengthy settlement particularly, that talk about expanding the sphere of influence is going to be a more expanded environmental analysis than if we focus on some of the other policies that don't involve impacting the agricultural area. And I hate to say that because I know what the need is for the city of Longhope, but it's a bigger update than just these statements.
I got you. So, anyway, those are my comments to council, I think they could be beneficial and help us move forward in the next expedited plan, if you guys all kind of agree with that, that we need their help also.
Councilor Ball. Yeah, just real quickly, again, I, we split, have arguments on whether Bailey should be a certain way, but I also may think that our urban limit line should be way up the head of the village on the north side. Because that's how I think, so I'm always interested in a discussion on the sphere of influence. Sometimes we don't always get what we want, but sometimes we have to think big. So, this all comes down to money, cost, right? So for me, I'm very curious, because you had mentioned Santa Maria is writing a grant smegel, and if there's anything that frustrates Dean, or probably anyone in this firm, is when we have to pay for something, and we could have found another source of revenue?
I did, Councilmember Ball, I did get two grants to help us with that 650,000 dollars. Almost 500,000 in grants.
With what's being kind of talked about and requested, this big picture stuff, are there still existing grant opportunities?
So, of course, I always look for any opportunity to get a grant. The grants that we were able to utilize for the general plan update for the housing element and those other elements were LEAP and REAP, fun acronyms. I think it's local early planning program or project or something, and then regional. And then there was another REAP 2.0 that came out, and we figured they wouldn't give us any more to help us with their housing element, so that's what we did the permit-ready ADU program with. But, yeah, if they come out with another round of funding, I'll go after it. But it's kind of based on population and stuff, so we're about like 170 to 220 is about what we get. So it's a help, but it's not substantial enough to cover all of the costs. But like I said, if we divide this thing out over, you know, a four-year period, we're having, you know, bite-sized amounts maybe that we have to enter contract for. So that was kind of the strategy.
Okay. I don't know, that, again, got to split this up one way, or another, another way to split it up might be is what can we implement sooner than later? Tomorrow, that actually gets this ball rolling, hopefully in the right direction, and gets AFCO's attention maybe? And then some of those other things, again, I still think, before we know it, it's going to be the 2050 discussion, right? And how this all comes together, and that's our opportunity maybe to stand up a little bit more and sustain the work that maybe we can do in the next few years here.
Councilor Starbuck.
Well, just a couple of comments on my end. This is the first review, this was done nine years after it was adopted. We're four or five years past that. It's funny to me that the town, we'll just say nine years, has not had enough building to fund an update on its general plan, that's pretty damn sad. One of the things on the general plan that also hits me is, you know, how many years has it been there, we've never had a vision statement as a city? So, I mean, if anybody had comments, I would absolutely write them down, I would go through this general plan. Vega and I are not perfect, and I would give them to Mr. Stones, and you could incorporate them into a future conversation when we have it, because, like I say, it was far from a perfect document when it was adopted. But, well, I'll tell you what, it's really hard to change once it's adopted, I'm learning that.
Not quite the same as what we were told back then, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilor Vega, real fast.
Sure.
I have a suggestion here, that maybe since we're talking about expansion and everything, maybe we should extend an olive leaf to the landowners that were participating in that expansion for Bailey Court, or make sure they're still on board, tell them, so they know what we're talking about. Let's make sure that before there was, I think there was all the landowners were involved, except for maybe one, you know, that was there, correctly if I'm wrong here? Anyway, just a thought, maybe we should allow them to come here and give us their comments also, a little bit of this process. I still think we need a little time to digest this, I don't, we can dig all the action we want, but we're not going to implement it. We've already been advised, if we don't have money, we got to go through a budget cycle. So why don't we bring it back in a month, let us all have an opportunity to read this stuff, and if we bring it back in a month, then we can, we can go from there.
Why not?
Huh? Make some, yeah.
I would agree with that, and any other comments that come in from councilmembers could include it.
Right? I guess I'll make it as, do I need to make a motion on that to bring this back?
Can I just confirm one thing? So you're talking in a month, that would be Tuesday, March 18th, that's also a council meeting? Do you want to do it on a council meeting date as well?
I think it's fine to get this over with on this date. I think it's, get it, get it, we don't need the first hour of this, we can go right into this. So I'm looking at the city manager, what do you say?
You mean the same timeframe?
Yeah, it's just like this, we do the same thing at 4 o'clock. Looking?
Yeah, we lose 2:30, okay.
I'm going to leave that to Christie to make that decision, if she can bring it back within a month.
I don't see why not.
Well, we bring, yeah, she'll see, she's always good to go.
Easy peasy.
Thumbs up, easy peasy.
So March 18th at 4 o'clock?
Everybody like March 18th at 4 o'clock?
Assuming the consultant can be here, I prefer coffee.
Okay.
Could bring you a pot of coffee.
And one more thing too, I just wanted to confirm, I know Councilmember Starbuck had requested or suggested the removal of anything specific to agriculture. Is that what you want to remove your comments on here and not discuss those?
I think I made that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I was, what I, that wasn't me.
Sorry.
Yeah, what I really was suggesting is, the agriculture is going to be the most controversial, the hardest to tick off the IR, if you put that on one side and brought back all the others.
Sure.
We probably could work through it, but I didn't get concurred on.
Sure, what I'm confirming though is, if you wanted to discuss those at the March 18th meeting.
Well, I've said I didn't get concurred on that suggestion.
We're just bringing this back on the 18th. With our, we get time to actually look at it, and we can bring it back.
And other comments from the council members?
And bring our own comments, yes.
Those comments would go to the planning staff before that?
Sure.
That works for me.
It may be a bigger spreadsheet you consider then, if I get a certain council member's comments separately.
Say that again?
The spreadsheet might be different, right? If I get another council member gives me comments, I'll have another row with another council member.
You've already got them, you've had them for two months.
All right, you good with that?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, I'm just going to clarify, so for me, I'm not going to come up with a whole, I know this side of the, of the day's house. a whole, I know this side of the, of the day has lots of comments. That's right. We're going to have time to review those in real time when we see them. For me, I may have one or two comments, but I will come to you ahead of time so that I don't catch you right in this moment. But I'll have a lot of questions about some of these, and maybe you can help edify some impacts. And my two categories of our timing, what's, what can we do for this, everyone in this room is what we're talking about. The big picture discussion, what can we check the box on sooner than later and pay for versus some other things that we can get done? And also for me, I want to hear your guys' thoughts and opinion on when should something fold into the 2050 bigger discussion versus get it done sooner because of strategy? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I offer that to any other council members that want to meet prior to and go through, I'm always happy to do that.
Okay, so got a motion, I'll need to push a button. I made it, push your second motion. So I made the first, and Councilmember Bridge seconded that, let's go ahead and vote. The plus five zero. So with that.
For this, for this report?
I know. Go in adjourned. To the Longmont City Council meeting, it's February 18th, 2025 at 6:30.